The order, it's. Thank you very much. We will call the meeting in order at six thirty one. Take attendance, roll call attendance. I don't see Larry Boudreaux. I don't see Lindsey Butler. Stephen Coswell.
Yep.
Richard Wright.
Yeah.
Walt Meisner here and Associate Member Roger White.
Here.
Okay, notifications, agenda is as posted on the town website and includes items reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty eight hours prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken. Order and exact time of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion. After public hearings, which cannot start prior to a scheduled time. I'm just if if I'm hesitating here because I'm going back and forth to see if there's anybody in a waiting room. Documents submitted for review can be found under the planning board tab on the town website. Meeting is being recorded, the recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. As this is a role remote meeting, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. As this is a remote meeting, those appearing before the board shall be prepared to share their screen to present materials for discussion. Chairman and Vice Chairman comments, as you all know, we're working this meeting under the state of emergency COVID nineteen legislation amended by chapter two oh one, November tenth, twenty twenty. The Novembers, I just wanted to point out, I sent you all a copy. Governor is proposing to extend the temporary suspension of certain open meeting law requirements. What this may mean for us is that to the extent we may want to, we can continue to use Zoom meetings and do this in Zoom meetings. We can talk about that when we talk about the schedule, how we want to do our meetings this summer or some high bred version of it. However, however, I will say I've heard nothing yet from town council or the town administrator as to how the town wants to proceed with holding our meeting with meetings. However, we are an independent board elected by the board, so we probably, as long as we're conforming with the state law, we can run the meetings any way we damn well choose to. Excuse me for using the word damn. I was told by Heather that the current expectation is that beginning in June, public meetings will be held in person at the town hall as they were before. I wanted to also announce that the planning board's recommendation of Roger Hoyt is the associate member will be accepted by the select board. At their meeting late seventeen. Steve, you you want to say something, Steve?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
And I also wanted to bring a note that Roger brought my attention and perhaps he can comment on it. That he had learned through the Worcester Registry of Deeds that the A and R that we endorsed for Bruce David on the one nineteen property in February of twenty twenty. Was not recorded and has expired. He tells me that this is not uncommon for a property prior to the sale, but the property who. Who but the property owner who intends to buy it, which I happen to know is flowers is designing. To a property line that does not currently exist, so that is just something for us to keep in mind. Or when it eventually comes up, Roger, do you want to have anything to comment on that?
Nope, I think you got it. Pretty much what it is, yeah, I didn't see anything on the registry of deeds, so if the registry is back open under their regular hours. The time period to record is back to what it used to be of. So I think that was the last thing that was open ended because of the state of emergency. And I think that one was done February, so. It may have been that the timeframe then. Continued into the state of emergency, which then got possibly got it told, but if that's ending, then they'll just need to go through that process again.
Okay. Okay, so that includes my concludes my chairman comments, any comments from the vice chair, Richard?
Nothing.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number two, hearings and applications, we had no request for hearings or any submissions prior to the posting of this agenda. So we have nothing to talk about with regards to any major issues. The third item is public comment. Chris, you're the only one here from the public, do you have any comments to to make or do you have any questions or any reason that you're joining us tonight that you want to speak out about?
Yes, I do, and I appreciate all of you being here tonight. I don't know much about technology, so please bear with me. Back in nineteen eighty nine, I received a variance from the board. And I have a property on a lake, so the ones in yellow are what I was approved for a variance. And I think Mr. Coswell back then said that once I got a variance, it could be cut up into twenty five pieces if I wanted to. But I have a neighbor who is suing us because he wants a piece by the water. And so I am asking that he buy it and not take us to court and sue us. And so I'm asking for, I don't know if I need to get a variance or what, but it's a twenty by forty piece right down by the water because they don't have any waterfront. For that piece of property and and I want to know what the process is of if I couldn't get the variance since I've I've already sold off three pieces of my property for other neighbors. And I just need this last one.
Now, first off, can I first, Chris, just for the record, can I get your last name, please?
Sure, I'm sorry, I Gogan.
Gogan?
Yes, and I live up on Lower Nocke Lake.
Lower Nocke, do you know the, can you give me the address, please?
There it's Five Hood, H O U D E Avenue.
Okay.
And the variance, the notice of decision that was before the board, I think, was back in January of nineteen eighty nine.
And the variance was probably given if I'm fairly new to the board meeting, I've only, this is just starting my third year. Variances are usually given by the ZBA, not by the planning board, is that correct, Roger? You're the expert.
That's where I would understand it, yeah, does it say you have your your letter with you?
I I just talked to Heather, I mean, I have, I have the decision that was made back then. And you know, just telling me that it is approved when three of my neighbors asked, one of them had a garage on our property, the other, it just wasn't ideally located. Our driveway was in his property and so forth, and so we asked to have it divided up and kind of make it more reasonable. So they gave me the three variances. And so I am petitioning and I don't know, I'm here because Heather said you go before this meeting, they'll tell you when to come back and what you need.
Well. She may know more about what we're supposed to do than we have the capability of doing, but I do promise you that we will, I can, if you've given this material to Heather, have you?
What material, the decision from nineteen eighty nine?
If you can get that and you can get what you just showed up on the screen to us, if you can get that to Heather, I will go down there and try to investigate it and get a better understanding of exactly what the circumstances was. And then we, the board, can kind of look it up and look up the decisions ourselves and figure and figure out and figure out what happened because I wouldn't want to mislead you or advise you in a way that I I'm just not competent to do yet. Steve, you said you mentioned Steve's name, so Steve, do you know anything about this?
Well, I can tell you that in nineteen eighty nine, my father was the chair of the ZBA, was chair of the ZBA for like a hundred years. So it wasn't me, it was my dad. And I would say whatever Mrs. Gogan, whatever you have that's relevant and you think is relevant to this proceeding here, you should get it to Heather so that we can take a look at it as a group. And could you describe to me what what is it that you're trying to do right now? Someone wants to buy, you want to sell someone a parcel of land that you own so that they can get waterfront, am I correct or?
Well, I don't want to, but they're coming, they're coming after us to sue us and I mean, they are suing us. And three other neighbors prior to them came up to us and asked us if we could, they could buy it. And we said, yes, and I've been before all the boards and I was granted the variance.
So you have you you have a variance, if I'm understanding you right, that gives you permission to sell that sliver of your property to someone else?
I have a variance that permitted me to sell off the three other pieces. If it if it's, our property is just under an acre on the water. And so when I went before the board before, one of the gentlemen on the boards, you know, because I asked him, it was an L shaped. One neighbor wanted one section of it, the other neighbor wanted the other one to make it a waterfront property. So I asked him if it mattered if it was L shaped or if I could cut it up anyway I wanted to, and he said, once you get the variance, you can cut it up into twenty five pieces. But I think that was off the record, so I'm coming to make sure that it's all appropriate and legal and asking the other neighbor on the other side. But they sold the house to new to a new person and they want, they want to have our property.
Yeah, well, we'll have to, we'll have to read the actual orders of condition of the variance before we could probably give you an answer, but. For now, if you can get that information to Heather as much background as we can and particularly about the address and the property and we'll do what we can to look up whatever we need to look. This may actually be an action of the ZBA, which is what Steve said was his his father was involved with. And it might not be a planning board thing, but on the other hand, maybe it is, and so we'll, but we we definitely are here to serve and we'll try to get you an answer.
Okay, thank you, and I also wanted to know, is it the zoning board if I wanted to add a garage or a room to our house, do I go before the zoning board there?
Do you want to take that one? I think that I think building commissioner.
It would be, just make sure I'm unmuted here, okay. Yeah, it wouldn't be us if dimensionally or setbacks or any reason you needed a variance for dimensional requirements, that would be ZBA.
Okay.
And but Heather can direct you to building commissioner Sarah and she'll make that determination of what you'd need to do.
Okay.
I would say if you get a set of plans, whatever, you know, again, be prepared with the set of plans and things like that that you can present. I mean, going in and telling them what you want to do is great, but you need to, at some point, you got to show them what you're going to do.
Okay. Okay, I will do that and I will bring this information to Heather and and leave it there for all of you to look at and somebody will get back to me and let me know a direction as to what to do.
Yes, I will.
If you've got, you know, a copy of that decision letter or anything that's got a reference for, you know, file number or something or deed, that would help.
Okay.
They're probably not electronic records from back then.
No. Well, they're not.
Well, thank you very much, Chris.
Well, and thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay.
Say anything would that you're near the water, so you probably are within the jurisdiction of conservation commission also, if you're anything within.
I well, I don't think they're doing anything to the piece of property, they just want to put a dock out on the water and be able to walk down and and use.
I think Roger was referring to your addition or garage.
Oh, yeah, it's it's up, the front of the house is beyond the hundred feet.
Okay, yeah.
But but it's not going to, it's on the side of the house, so I am within a hundred feet, you're right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
You just speak to Heather and Sarah.
Okay.
Get you in the right course.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I I see no other members of the public that are on the call, so we can move on to administrative matters here. These two items I put on the agenda only for clarity. The Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee Representation, we did approve at the last, to have Roger be our representative. But, you know, but last, at the last meeting, but we only approved that through June. And I now have before me a request to, I need for appointment for the next fiscal year. So I, we would need a vote if Roger wishes to continue or if no other member of the board would like to serve on this Joint Transportation Committee Representation, then we can entertain a motion to continue Roger if he would accept in this role. I'd like to ask though, before I ask for a vote, I'd like to ask Roger to tell us exactly what the Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee does.
You're asking me?
I'm asking you, you're on the board, so I'd like what this committee appointed to you do.
Yeah. I, they do so many things that, and it's so much alphabet soup of everything they're involved in, but basically it's setting the priorities for the tip, the transportation improvement program for how the money is spent in the area. They're more of an advisory.
That's federal and state money that you.
I think it's, yeah. I've only, you know, for the last couple of months gotten to their meeting, so. But I can tell you more as I continue.
Do you wish to continue?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to put for Roger's position.
This year.
I'll look at that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, let me take a roll call vote, Larry Boudreaux is absent, Lindsey Butler.
Yes.
Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Richard Wright? And Walt Meisner says yes, congratulations, Roger, you continue in this role.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, that was my mistake, I did not. I'd forgotten and it was confirmed in Lindsey's minutes that she submitted that we approved Roger being the MRPC representative from the committee last, last time. However, I would like to use this opportunity as Roger to again tell us what the heck Monticuce's Regional Planning Commission does.
Just about everything. As you know, they administer the DLTA program to provide technical assistance to member communities, anything from zoning to just what we've got, master plan, chapters, hazard mitigation plan, many, many things. That's a state funded program that's allotted every year. They are involved with.
So Roger, you can do it to the planning board, to the town, if there were grant funding available, does that run, run through this?
Partially, as I did it as as planning board applications. But yes, I keep the town up to date on what the planning commission is offering, they also select, select board has a representative also, but they're generally the ultimate member, the planning board members.
But you're our guy, Rog, you're our guy.
I am, I am.
We're going to be counting on you for the info for the low down.
You get the minutes every week, yeah, I'll keep you up to date, anything that involves us, but.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll put that in our normal committee and board reports.
So is this for the twenty one to twenty two year?
This is for the twenty one, twenty two year.
All right, so.
That that's that was what we voted on last time.
Yes, and I got clarification from actually yesterday that
Good.
My term as the representative continues until June thirtieth. Whether I'm a planning board member or not, or it's not interrupted unless a new, unless they receive a form notifying him of a new representative. So that clarifies my participation in MRPC for June anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other member reports and other boards and committee. Richard, anything on economic development since our last meeting?
No.
Okay, Larry is absent, so there, and I don't believe there's been any meetings from complete streets. MRT, the Marijuana Review Team or Committee, there has been nothing to, there have been no meetings since our last meeting, so nothing to report there.
I got a quick question if I could, Walt.
You sure may, Stephen.
Where's this, that, the flower guy from Menk?
Eddie's Flowers, Eddie's Flowers.
Eddie's Flowers.
Yes, they came before us several meetings ago. Gave us, you know, showed us what they were thinking of doing, we gave them some comments and feedback and they have gone sort of back to the drawing board, not back to the drawing board, but they are continuing to develop their plan. And they are, it's expected that their application will come back before the MRT Committee and with a request to ask us to to vote on their entering into a community host agreement with the Board of Selectmen. But thus far, we have heard nothing from them, so we're not quite sure where their development is. As we spoke earlier, this was before you came on, Lindsey. We did, Roger did come upon the information that the Bruce David property that we considered an A and R for a long time ago, must have been a year ago, to subdivide that property. As so that he could sell portion of it to Eddie's Flower still has has not been recorded in the Registry of Deeds. And it's expired, which means that Eddie's Flowers hasn't, you know, yet bought the property from Bruce David. They're still developing the plans, so I think the short answer to your question, Steve, is there's they're sort of floundering in the early stages of developing their idea and their plan, although they have expended a considerable amount of money with an architect to, you know, put together the plan for the lot as they hope to purchase from Bruce David. But if, since they haven't recorded it in the Registry of Deeds and since the, it's expired, they may have to come back before us to divide that property again.
I'm just wondering, they're the only group in town that's looking to do retail, is there anybody?
They're the, they're the only one that is, that is on the docket that I have seen so far from the MRT Committee that is asking for a retail license. They're asking actually for, they're asking for three licenses, Eddie's Flower, they want to be, they want to be cultivation. They want to be manufacturing and they want to be retail.
I I was under the impression with all this marijuana legislation that you could not have growers, cultivators and retailers on the same property.
I'm not, we're not aware of that, we.
You get, you get that information, as the process plays out, you get that information from the state, I would think, the control.
Our understanding is there's nothing that prevents that from happening.
Okay.
I mean, that's our, and and I'm not the most informed on the MRT Committee, but we've had considerable discussions about Eddie Flowers and Eddie's Flowers, and that's never come up. So I think it's probably possible, yes, go ahead, Lindsey.
I just have a question, so I'm just curious if, has anyone asked them about like a retail gap analysis? I'm just thinking like, we, we, there's so many pot shots now, you know, there's the one in Winchandon, Ashby's having them, Gardner has a few of them.
Well, part of their application includes a, I wouldn't call it an analysis, in other words, they're not asked to go out and get an independent market analysis. But they are asked to provide the MRT Committee with the rationale as to why they think this business would be successful. So, but it isn't, it isn't as rigid as, as, as your question suggested. Yeah, but it is part of the the whole application process and when they do go into a community host agreement with the town, the town, you know, that, those questions come at them too from the Board of Selectmen. Now, I will say, getting to a community host agreement, you're only about a third of the way through the process. Because after that, you got to go through like six months of getting the licenses through the state. And it's, it's a good solid year to a year and a half, as far as I can see. If you're aggressively pushing it to actually get through all of the state things to actually be able to do what they want to do. And then on that property, after they go through all of that, then they're going to spend a lot of money, you know, adding in the cultivation and the manufacturing part, but it's, it's not an it's not a easy business to to make go. Although it, you know, it's, it sounds better than it is, I think.
Yeah, what happened, you know, the, I'm, we're playing B, because at some point, market's going to get saturated and some of these guys are going to get left holding bag, what's plan B for, you know, some of these sites?
And and that is exactly one of the things we have talked about, for example, with the Green Ventures property, which is, what is that on Hayes Road or I can't remember the road, but. They, you know, basically if that goes under, you know, the property just goes back on the market, it can be in, you know, bought by anybody to do any kind of either business or in in some cases residential or farming, they don't have, I mean, there's a little risk for us to approve a cultivation area and there's, there's a little bit of risk with the property down Evo Kana, I think they've changed their name, but that's the manufacturing that's down in South Ashburnham. They've gone pretty far and they're renovating that building and that's manufacturing and, you know.
You say manufacturing, you mean cultivation growing.
No, you grow it cultivation and then you have to treat it and prepare it for sale.
Okay.
That's the manufacturing part.
Okay.
And I, I know nothing about it, so I don't know, I know nothing about marijuana, to be perfectly blunt and honest.
You sound like you do, you sound like you know quite a bit.
This is just going to that meeting, it's just from going to the meeting, you know, I I am a very square dude. With, but no, I I don't know exactly the processes they go through to prepare it, but that's what they, that's what they're doing down in South Ashburnham. And, you know, that, the thing that was a disappointment to me on the Marijuana Review Team was to learn that in cultivation and manufacturing, the town technically doesn't get anything more except for the tax dollars for that building or for that property. the town technically doesn't get anything more except for the tax dollars for that building or for that property. We do.
On the retail end of it?
It's all in the retail. The only time we get a percentage of their sales is when they get to a retail. And the only.
Host agreement, and then your taxation, and that's all retail.
Yeah, and on the.
And that's capped, too.
And that's capped, and that's capped at a certain amount. And so you get a little bit, you know, on the retail operation, and the retail operation is directly related, how many licenses you can have in town is directly related to the amount, a, a number of licenses you have of liquor licenses in town. So, I think we can only have, I think, like, one and a half license, and it's not possible to have a half license. So, once we have a retail operation, we're only gonna have like one in town, if we have any at all. On the cultivation and the manufacturing side, for the first five years, we, they have to pay an impact fee, which is basically, if we go to them and we say, well, this is gonna cost you, it's gonna cost us this much more in fire, this much more in police, this much more in water and services and things like that, for your business to come in town. We can collect a fee for five years, you know, that matches those additional expenses that hit the town. But, once those five years go away, we lose that fee, so.
Police and fire and health services, emergency services are already starting to come, come up with some budget numbers and analysis.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's all gonna be a part of the community. That's above my pay grade. That's really the, the select board has to.
They just wanna get caught short and let the.
Yeah. Oh, I agree. You have to be pretty creative when you, when you go into.
It's an opportunity that you have to cap, you know, excuse the expression, but cash in on.
Yeah, you have, you have to give it to your best, but I was disappointed to find that there wasn't really ongoing profit, tax profit that the town could benefit from, unless it's a retail operation. You know, a retail operation, there is a small sales tax that, that can, that can be tapped onto it. So, anyway, that's, that's, but MRT, we haven't met in the last couple of weeks, so I have nothing to really report there. And on the Bylaw Review Committee, the only report I have there is, is that we're continuing to work. We've started into the zoning bylaws. We're kinda trying to work through those.
How are they looking, Rog? I mean, Walt, how are they looking?
What, the bylaws?
Bylaws.
Well, see, the thing is, is all we're doing is going through the bylaws and commenting on whether we think the bylaw is satisfactory as is, or if it's a bylaw that has potential to be modified, or issues that should be rectified in a future review of the bylaw. We are now gonna have, we're waiting for the contract with General Code. General Code is a firm that specializes in the codification of town bylaws and putting them on the websites and making them accessible to towns. And we were very impressed with, with the, with the presentation by General Code, that's the name of the company, that codifies bylaws, and they've done them for a number of towns. They did it for Townsend, and they've done it for some, you know, we looked at Maynard, and we looked at, you know, and, and I can't, right now, off the top of my head, I can't remember the other towns that they were in, but they're in a number of Massachusetts towns. And what they'll do is they'll take our current bylaws, they'll reorganize them, recodify them, not changing a word of the actual bylaw, but organize them in a way that they're easier to grouping them together, because right now, our bylaws, we have the bylaws from like twenty, two thousand, twenty oh six. And then they were updated in twenty fourteen, and they were updated in twenty eighteen, and they just tack them on to the end. So there, you can't, you, they're very hard to read and find, so they'll help us recodify it, get it organized, put it on the website. You'll be able to type in a word and find a bylaw much quicker by doing that. Once we get it to that standpoint, then they will make a comparison with other towns for us. And they'll do a legal analysis of where we have conflicts in our bylaws. And that will lead to some changes in the bylaws. And then the fourth thing we'll do is then we'll go through our list of what we're doing now, where we have comments about certain bylaws that aren't very efficient, or have conflicts in them that are confusing, and raise questions, and we'll work through General Code to see about rewording and, and, but when we get to that point, that's when we have to go to a town meeting, and we say, these are the changes we are recommending in the bylaws, and we have to get them voted on at a town meeting, because you can't change one single word in our bylaws without going to a town meeting. So, that's, but we are, you know, our summer schedule for the Bylaw Committee, yeah, well, we were meeting weekly, but through the summer, we're gonna, we, it'd be more like every couple of weeks, three weeks, it's a little bit more spread out. I don't, can't think, are there any other more, are there any other committee or board reports? I can't think of, I think we covered them all. The final thing was, the, the, the item four D was Town Notices and Announcements. There were only two to bring to your attention. I won't bother reading them. Heather sent them out to everybody on the Planning Board website today, but the two announcements, one was the Planning, the Gardner Planning Board has a June eighth hearing for a special permit application by Haywood Memorial Hospital to build an extension to the south side of an existing building. And the other announcement was our ZBA, Ashburnham ZBA, on June sixteenth, we'll have a hearing for a special permit to allow the owners of sixty-nine Stodge Meadow Road to build a single family home slightly larger than the original footprint. So those were the only two announcements we had. We now have, we have two approval of minutes, one that was, was overlooked by, that Roger thankfully put together a announcement, or put together a a briefing of our February twenty-third joint meeting with the Open Space and Recreation Committee. You should have all received a copy of it. I can put it up there. I believe you can see it, or should be able to see it now. It's very brief. It's only, it was a recorded meeting, so therefore, there, the details of these minutes aren't. I hope i- if it's too small, I can increase it a little bit. So, so anyway, do I have, if you all have had a chance to look at it, or wanna take a brief look at it now, I, I would gladly entertain a motion to approve these minutes, so that we can correct something that we've been negligent in getting posted. Anybody willing to make a motion to approve these?
I'd like them to approve.
Richard?
I'll second it.
And Stephen is second. I have a motion in a, a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. I'll take a roll call, acceptance of these minutes. Lindsay Butler?
Well, I wasn't there.
Oh, you weren't there?
No, it was just you, Richard.
And your stage, so it's just us three.
Yeah.
Richard? You'll say yes. Roger, you wanna vote on it?
Yeah, Roger can.
Yeah, and Walt Meisner, yes. How about you, Roger? You're on mute.
I don't know if I can vote. I'm not a full board member, but you only need three.
You were, you were, did this meet.
Yes, and we would need a quorum. We would need at least three, and that's all we have, so.
Yeah, the, the three of you are, the four of you can vote on them.
Well.
Well, we weren't there, though.
You wrote them. They weren't there.
I was not.
You only had three. You wrote them, and you were, you were Chair of the Board at the time of the meeting, so we're gonna accept your vote.
The house cleaning item.
Yeah, it's house cleaning. Get it posted. So, I, I think we've approved these. Lindsay, let's just say we have. And then the second one was minutes that for the last meeting, which was May twelfth, I am going to zoom in, I, on.
Sorry, Steve, I spelled your name wrong. I see that.
Yeah, so I, the only thing I had, I thought they were great. Thanks, Lindsay.
My, me, I'm, I'm, it's okay. That's alright.
So, correct.
Stephen Coswell is correct there. S T E A N C O S W E L.
And then the second one, the only thing I suggested is, is that so that they match the agenda that it was four, four A was the scenic road permit, and then there was five, A was Far Hills, B was Willard Road, and C was, and, and then everything else is, matches the agenda. That was my only suggestion.
Okay, that's. Yeah, that's fine.
Other than that, has everybody had a chance to look at them? Any comments? Any other additional edits?
Good.
Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
And seconded by Richard. Let's take a roll call vote. Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Yes.
And Walt Meisner? Yes. Okay. So, we now go back to the agenda. The, I have the schedule of meetings for this coming election year. I took it through next June. I sent it out to you all. We can, if anybody has any comments, I, you know, obviously, as we've done all before, when we're looking at, you know, December, sometimes around the holidays, we make adjustments as we need to make adjustments. But it's kind of easier to have a schedule that we change as we need to change, so is this acceptable to everybody? Anybody have any comments?
Moving forward, we're gonna, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lindsay, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I think it's good. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, that's, I, I was just, we're, we're gonna, are we gonna, I think it would be good to have Zoom available and, and, you know, moving forward. People are, you know, more remote today, and some people might be more comfortable with it. So, can we keep that availability option open, or, you know? I, I wanna do face-to-face, in-person meetings more than anybody. But I just wanna, I, I'm thinking that maybe it may give us an option and make things more smooth and, and more flow better over time.
Well, you know, I agree with you. I, I, I sent out to, as we spoke earlier, I sent about, out the the governor's press release that said that they do want to extend the temporary modifications to the open meeting laws through September one. And I thought the most interesting point about that, about that press release is that the reason he wanted to extend it to September one was to give more time for, you know, ongoing use of technology. There's little details that I think they need to work out. But because we're still partially under a COVID state of emergency, then he, he can extend it to September first. We have the option, basically, we are a, a separate elected board of the town. We don't report to the town administrator, and we don't report to the Board of Selectmen because of that. So, we can basically choose to run the meetings any way we want to run the meetings, as long as we are conforming with state law. Which means we could do the summer as Zoom meetings, or we could do the some, summer as meeting in person, and make sure there's a Zoom.
I liked it. I like in person, but I'm thinking that, you know, for, for the time being, the Zoom option for someone might be.
Yeah. I, I'm all for that, Steve, and if we can figure out the technology and make that work, I'd be for it. I'd also be for it, because I think it has been convenient to be able to have the meetings recorded. Because we're, you know, it makes taking the minutes a little bit easier, because we can always go back and check it, and you also don't have to make sure you get every single important word or action taking place in it.
Right.
If you, if you've recorded the minutes. I would recommend that we try, you know, we, we meet in person, but we have a Zoom option. I know, for example, Richard, you know, will be traveling for a couple of these meetings, won't be in town for.
Most definitely. The, the next, over the next year, I'll be traveling. But I'll do the best I can with Zoom meetings. I'll be on, I could do that, but I can't do Zoom meetings if I'm out of town.
Right.
Person.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, I, the only requirement I would have us consider is, is if somebody is presenting an application, if they're presenting an A and R, if they're presenting an application personally, I want them to be there in person.
Yeah, all, all presenters have to be in person. People, you know, in the public and board members can do it Zoom, but anyone making a presentation to the board must be present and accounted for.
In, in person.
Yeah.
Well, let me, sorry, I just wanna step in on that. So, from my experience, I just have to say, I think it's more for people that are presenting. I've found that, you know, I've had meetings, and they're, they have three meetings in that one night, so they're able to conduct and go to three meetings for three different applicants, which I think is nice, because if you're paying somebody, right, to represent you, now you're taking their whole evening, so now you're gonna pay them the whole evening when they're really just taking fifteen minutes of the time. So I've just found, you know, that they can be on multiple meetings in one evening, which is, it's convenient for them, but I just think of as an applicant as well. Then that's that much less time you're paying someone to represent you. But I do think that they should be, they should fully be presenting. We shouldn't be doing that for them.
Yeah, the only thing I worry about is, is a disconnect sometimes.
I'm a touchy-feely guy.
With the, with the owner sometimes being able to sort of zoom in, not turn on their, you know, not turn on their video, you lose, you know, there's.
I think it's important for plans to be presented.
Yeah, and, yeah, you wanna make sure they, they have to, I mean, maybe what you could do is you could, I, I think, I'm thinking out loud now, which for me is always dangerous, but if I would, if, piggybacking on what Lindsay said, if we said when someone is presenting, there has to be at least one person representing at the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's.
They could have their engineer.
They can have a car in, in.
Yeah, they could have their engineer move in, but at least the owner or someone else, some representative of the applicant, whether it's their lawyer, or whether it's the applicant, or if it's the engineer, should be in person. They could all be in person, but at least one, that might be a requirement that we have.
Because technically, the, the homeowner, they don't necessarily have to be there either. They have someone representing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but as long as you have somebody in a face-to-face situation, then that might be the exception, but frankly, will, what I'm gonna, I will, between now and the next meeting on June ninth, I will have a conversation with the town administrator about and the town council as to how the town is planning on responding to the governor's extension of these things. And we'll propose to meet in person with a Zoom alternative with the, with a, a Zoom option for board members and the public. But, but that applicants need to have at least one representative live and in person. And that I would ask the board members to, unless you're out of town and unable to come to the meeting, you'll, you, you should make every. you'll, um, you, you should make every attempt you possibly can to attend the meeting in person.
Cause the town does have a policy for remote participation. But it does require that. It does require that the public can, can have live interaction with that board member. It's not just.
Yeah, I think you just need a quorum, well, for the.
Yes.
You need a present, a quorum present and then other, other members can remote.
But the, the issue is the location in town, if, does that room have the technology?
Sure.
Yeah.
To have, uh, remote participation.
And I mean, I, 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 for example, know exactly how I can do it cause I've done it in meetings at work with my own laptop. But ideally, I think we want the town to make sure there's the technology to be able to do it in that room. Um, so that, you know, we're not bringing in personal laptops and stuff to do work. So anyway, with that as sort of a discussion, uh, the main reason this is on is to, um, do I have a motion in a second to approve, um, the proposed meeting schedule for the election year, May twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-three?
I will make a motion to accept this, uh, schedule as written.
And we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, we'll take a roll call vote. Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Uh, Stephen Coswell?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Yeah.
Walt Meisner, yes. Okay, um, we therefore, um, are at our next meeting, um, is Wednesday, June ninth, twenty twenty-one. Um, and we'll have two meetings in June. And like I, just to repeat what I just said, we'll, uh, have it at Town Hall. Uh, and I'll work on seeing if I can have a Zoom option uh, available for those who, um, are members of the public or members of the board who happen to be out of town and unable to attend in person.
Great.
June ninth, I will be out of town.
On the ninth, you will be?
I will be, yeah.
Okay, so.
Well, we'll be getting set up with a Zoom for you there, Richard, then.
As long as I'm not traveling and I'm there, I'm, I can Zoom with you guys. No problem.
Super, super. Um, so we're at the end of the meeting. Do I have any other comments from anyone? And if not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved and a second?
Second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second to, to adjourn or, uh, roll call vote. Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Stephen Coswell?
Yep.
Richard Wright? I know Richard's saying yes, even though you're, and Walt Meisner, yes. You all have a wonderful evening and we'll see you on the ninth if not before. Hey, talk to you later.
Have a good one, everybody.